Okay, everybody, we'll get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. Call these being into order. Today's date is November 10th, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, November 10th. The time is 5:30 PM. We have a quorum present today. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Counselor Johnson is absent. Motley?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Beyondich?
Present.
Bachschnider?
Here.
Freely?
Here.
Coffee?
Here. Would anyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you. Item number four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone from the general public that would like to address the council meeting this evening. So this is the opportunity to come forward at this time. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come and speak or address the council in any way, shape, or form this evening? Sir, please come forward.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, you come in, please come forward and turn the light to green. Turn the light to green. And please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
My name is Thomas Wheelander. Born and raised in this city, as was my father. His father was an immigrant, here nor there. When the, I'm addressing the rental ordinance tonight. When that came into effect, I did in fact have two properties that I was renting in town. And at that point, I made the decision, I'm closing shop. I'm not going to be a Virginia landlord any longer. And a couple of months after that, I received a couple of letters telling me that a lot that I had with a garage needed to be licensed for rental. And a property that I just sold needed to be licensed for rental. Of course, this sounded erroneous, so I went to the appropriate office to address that. And they took note of what I told them. And my home that my father built in 1946, and I inherited, a six-bedroom, three-story home, kind of unusual for the neighborhood. They said, well, what about that? And I said, well, I have a friend staying there and we're cost-sharing. I'm not a landlord anymore. And that was flat-out rejected, which I found out later with unilaterally no able, no offer to discuss it. And I just let it ride because I'm not a man of means to, I would have wanted to take it in front of a judge and say, what is a landlord? Because a landlord is as different from a married couple or people living together. There are many more obligations that a landlord has. And when people are cost-sharing, that's like people living together. And I don't think anybody's chasing them down, telling you, now you're a landlord because you own the building and you're living there and helping paying the expenses. And I felt that was fair enough. And who here knows that the equal opportunity federal laws do not apply to a five-unit or less structure where the owner lives? Does anybody know that? Why would they have that written into that law if it weren't some sort of deep imposition to tell people how they can associate, who they can share costs with? And I will tell you, I had a friend that I shared costs with for nine years in that very structure. And that means his costs were less than half of what it would be to normally go out and rent a place. So I'm not making money off of a friend. I am just sharing costs. And I think somebody should look into, first, if somebody says, I'm not a landlord, have criteria that you can prove that point. I believe I'm not a landlord. You're telling me I am. And I don't think it's fair that you, you can tell me that, maybe put it in front of a judge, let a judge decide. I don't know if that's easy to do or not. I don't have the money for lawyers to do it, but when you unilaterally tell me you're a landlord, and I'm pretty sure I'm not, you know, I'm, that's why I'm here, to ask you to please address that situation and get it clarified. I want to know. I don't believe I'm a landlord, and you insist I'm a landlord.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wheelander. Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
So when you came to City Hall, do you know who you spoke to with respect to that, or did an individual come to your house?
No, I was in the office and your inspector of rentals is who I addressed.
Okay, very good, thank you. So what I would ask you to do is, when you have time during normal business hours, come in and talk to Jenny, could you come talk to you? Jenny Boubine, our committee development director, and she'll walk through that whole process with you and see what can be done with that, in that regard, Mr. Wheelander.
Yes, and I guess I would ask, do you want to hear from my friend who came here, if there's anything of salient value, to prove my point that as a landlord, you have to charge market rates, you have to have contracts, you have to follow Minnesota law to the letter? Between friends, that's, that's not like that.
Well, no, Mr. Wheelander, I don't think it's necessary for the gentleman that you're cost-sharing with to speak, but he's welcome to do so. But I will urge you to come during normal business hours and speak to our committee development director, Jenny Boubine, who oversees part of that process as well, to see what can be done to make adjustments if they can with respect to your request.
Sure.
Thank you very much, one and all. You're welcome, Mr. Wheelander. Anybody else that would like to address the council meeting this evening? Seeing none, item number five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the following meetings. 5.1A, the October 28th, 2025 city council meeting. 5.1B, October 27th, 2025 special council meeting. And item 5.1C, the November 4th, 2025 special committee of the home meeting. Item 5.2 is the adoption of finance resolution number 25-021, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approved pay estimate number 18 to Carl Anderson for the Public Safety Center in the amount of $269,948.77. Item 5.4 is approve the travel request for the police department officer Dan Nyland to attend the basic SRO training in January, which is the School Resource Officer Training, January 20th through the 23rd, 2026, in Blaine, Minnesota, at a cost of $1,052. And finally, item 5.5, approve the exempt permit for the Masaba Humane Society to conduct a raffle on December 5th, 2025 at the Virginia Elks Club. These are the consent agenda items before the council today, looking for council action.
I'll move the approval of the consent agenda as listed and documented.
A council freely moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Bachschnider for discussion, a further discussion, Counselor Bachschnider.
Thank you. Can we please pull 5.2 for a separate consideration?
Sure. We'll hold in abeyance 5.2, so looking for a motion. There's a motion in support for 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. I just have a question if we're still in further discussion on item 5.4. So do we have a contract currently with Rock Ridge for an SRO in place?
There is a contract that was presented to the school. I don't know what the status of that contract is. Do we know?
It's been executed.
Has been executed.
So we have an SRO at the school now? Okay, so that's executed, so that leads me to my next question. This expenditure for training of the SRO, does Rock Ridge reimburse us for any training that our officers need to attend? And if, is that in any contract form at all?
I don't know what the contract says. I don't have it before us. I know there's a, there's a feat that I came to agreement on with respect to us providing that, SRO. And of course, a school resource officer should be sent to training for that purpose, particularly when emergency responses to school incidents and how to handle students. So I don't know the answer to that.
I'm fine with the travel request and I'm fine with him doing this. I just feel that maybe that the ISD 2909 should bear some of the cost for the training of one of our officers that is actually in place to be the SRO. Now, I'll just leave that as a comment for now. I'm fine with the request. But if that's not in a contract going forward, I would think that that might be something that we could discuss in future contracts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to approve 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, which has been, a question has been added, noted, in item 5.5. Is there any further discussion on those items? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5.2, adoption of finance resolution number 25-021, schedule of bills. Counselor Bachschnider.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 15 of the packet, page four of the schedule of bills, we have a payment going out to EJ Equipment in the amount of $437,878 for the camera, the sewer camera. And I do have concerns with approving that on the schedule of bills. Am I able to pull that one payment out and we can approve the remaining, remainder of the schedule? Britt is saying yes. Do I do that via motion or do I just pull it?
We can approve the schedule of bills and then omitting that, removing that payment.
And I need to do that via motion?
Yes.
Okay, I would move to approve the schedule of bills, omitting the payment to EJ Equipment for the sewer camera.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Counselor Bachschnider, is there support?
Support.
A support by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson, then over to Counselor Freely. Counselor Paulson.
Question then that I would have is, was that check already sent out? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Freely?
And this will be pending further discussion with regard to this item so that we can get it clarified and accomplished.
It's still an item for discussion, yes. So, motion by Counselor Bachschnider, supported by Counselor Motley to pull item, that was, what item was that?
A payment to EJ Equipment.
Okay, all right. Motion to pull that payment for further discussion at a later time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we'll move to item six, appearances. There's no one scheduled for the council today. We'll move to item seven, unfinished business, Minnesota Humane Society Animal Control Contract. We're still in discussions with respect to that. Just a little note, I think it's already been reported and a letter sent and a decision made that St. Louis County paid the bill, I think it was $29,000 in some sense, for the, for the cats that had to be removed and mitigated by the Masaba Humane Society. So that piece has been taken care of. That was part of the discussion with respect to contract moving forward. So that's one part of the contract that has been mitigated and we're continuing to move forward, again with the Humane Society and trying to find an agreement to, with a contract. So that's ongoing. So we'll move on to item number eight, discussion. Counselor Freely?
I'd make a quick motion to send a letter of appreciation to St. Louis County for doing that for the city of Virginia.
Sure. Motion by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Bachschnider?
What was that motion?
Motion in support for the discussion, Counselor Paulson.
Sorry, I just don't know, I didn't hear the motion.
It was a letter of appreciation to St. Louis County for covering the cost of that bill for the city of Virginia.
Oh, okay. And I just, okay, I'll support that, but it was actually Commissioner Nelson. When I called Commissioner Nelson, he said that he has some discretionary funds that could potentially be available, and he must have done, tapped into those discretionary funds and got the approval. So it was Commissioner Nelson that agreed to pay that, that invoice for, on our behalf.
Yeah, and my discussion with him as well on a number of occasions. And he had, he led the way to get that through staff to be paid. If you want to add an amendment recognizing Commissioner Nelson, would that be amenable to you, Counselor?
Absolutely.
All right, and the support also as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does that satisfy the concerns that you have with respect to this letter and motion? Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Item eight, 8.1, adopt the resolution for the sale of surplus equipment for the police department?
Moved. Support.
A move to approve by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley?
Counselor Motley supported it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what did I say? Okay, who made the motion?
Paulson.
Okay, okay, so I apologize. Counselor Paulson makes the motion for the sale of equipment for the police department, supported by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.2 is discuss the option to change the council meeting time for the December 9th, 2025 council meeting to 5:00 PM. The reason for that is that we have to have our truth and taxation meeting, which will start about six, by 6:01. We'd like to get through the majority of the council meeting, if possible, for that time. So asking to change the, option to change the meeting date to 5:00 PM on December the 9th.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counselor Bachschnider, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Item 8.3 is adopt the resolution for detachment and annexation of land, 9th Street North at Hoover Road intersection. So can we get a little explanation of this, Jenny? Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. If you recall, a while back, we had been discussing with Mindot and Mountain Iron about the orphan segment of 9th Street. And this is clearing up that matter so that when that road project is done in that area, we can get that road turned back to the city. So it's a formal process to go through with the city of Mountain Iron.
Moved. A move to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Bachschnider for discussion, further discussion, Counselor Bachschnider.
Thank you. Is there any cost to the city to do this, or is it just the formality?
It would be the formality and then recording cost.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bachschnider. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item four, adopt the resolution for stuff the ambulance and ongoing popular Christmas for the little kids, thanks to the fire department and other departments, usually you park by the McDonald's there and stuff the ambulance there, so a formal request to do so again this year.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counselor Bachschnider and supported by Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.5, review and approve the proposed final city of Virginia vision and mission statement as presented by the Labor Management Committee. Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.6, adopt the resolution for final payment of the 2025 pavement reconditioning Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support? Is there support?
Support.
A support by Counselor Beyondich, further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Just a quick clarification on which pavement reconditioning this was, what location?
500 Block 11, Street South, Avenue West.
These were the overlayments?
Yeah, the older ones, yeah. And we've paid already, there's just the final payment for those projects.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7, planning and zoning meeting that was held on November 3rd, 2025. And there's a recommendation to approve the following variance requests. At 8.7, one, approve the variance request from Grant and Angel Johnson, 717 Borgon Road, to allow for an 816 additional square feet on a 26 by 26-foot existing accessory structure for a total allowance of 1,816 square feet. This is a property up in Midway, which is the house I used to own.
So moved.
They're adding a garage, I think. Moved by Counselor Bachschnider, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries in item 8.7, two, approve the variance request for ANT Canopy LLC, located at 550 North 3rd Avenue North, to allow for a setback of 22 feet on the westward side of the property where 25 feet is required for an additional eight-foot by 12-foot accessory structure, and allow for a setback of one foot on the south side of the property where a 20-foot setback is required for a 24-foot by 20-foot accessory structure. This is the Austin Towers project.
So moved. Support.
Moved to approve by Counselor Bachschnider and supported by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. A move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the home meeting that was held on November 4th, 2025. And we'll turn this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. At the November 4th committee of the home meeting, Mr. Sean Lewis from Carl Anderson was there to provide an update on the Public Safety Center and its budget. He reported, Mr. Lewis reported that we were still remaining within budget and working through a few logical logistical issues and potential enhancements that still need to be addressed. We had further discussion regarding the request to put epoxy floor, epoxy on the floors that are in the building that this was called for finishing, but when we were doing the value engineering to cut down the cost of the project because it was over budget, we did remove this. So we had a lot of discussion regarding that. The reason, just to point out, the reason why we haven't fully moved in yet is the police department's waiting for the relocation of this, the security system, it's actually the FBI connection through the state of Minnesota, has to be done by the state of Minnesota, and they can't give us a date quite yet when they're going to be here, if they're hoping next week to move that. Once they move that, then the police department has to relocate to that, to the new building. The fire department's been waiting for the decision on the floors, is my understanding. Is that correct, deputy chief? Thank you. After much discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution for change order number 65 for placement of epoxy on the floors of the Public Safety Center for an increase in the project amount of $87,887. It did fail. Maybe we didn't have any other motions pertaining to that. Any other discussion on that one, on the epoxy floors?
Well, I think it still bodes well for the discussion where we do it here, the next came to the home meeting. I say we have to revisit that from my personal perspective, but we didn't have all the counselors' present at that time. But Counselor Freely?
Well, we just finished building a $30 million building, and we have the money necessary to add that value back to it by putting epoxy on the floor to protect that surface for significantly more years than it would with just finished concrete. So given the fact that we still have the money in the budget, I would suggest we add that value back to the building and put the epoxy on it. And it would be a safety factor for the people that are working in the garage as well with the gridded surface to keep them from slipping as well. So I think it's a good value that was originally a part of the project. And given the investment we have in this building, I think it's wise to move forward with that additional action.
A motion can be made in that regard, Pam? Is that a motion on your behalf, Counselor Freely?
It is.
And to be paid for from? From the public safety contingency? No? What, where?
Looks like the contingency.
From the public safety contingency, yes, yes. Yeah, so moved by Counselor Freely, is there support?
I might add, if we do approve this, there's still an additional 186,000 still in the contingency as well for other issues. So I don't know what else we're saving this money for. Anyhow.
Okay, thank you. Once again, moved by Counselor Freely, is there support? Is there support? I'll support for discussion, further discussion. Counselor Motley?
Britt, where does the money go if we don't spend, if we don't spend every last cent of the contingency fund for the public safety building?
Would not, when we refinance the debt through USDA, we would not refinance as much debt through the USDA.
So less debt, less debt taken out if we don't spend the contingency fund?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? May come forward, Assistant Chief Jonison. Once again, you know the drill, turn the light on to green. Assistant Chief Eric Jonison from our fire EMS, welcome.
As I just turned it off. The areas that we're asking to epoxy are not polished. It is concrete. You can still see dimensions where carpenters wrote on the floors. You can see saw cuts. It's unfinished between the wall and the floor. There's no trim. The bathrooms on the main floor that are listed in the epoxy all have showers. Those showers will begin to mold and mildew. We can't do anything about it. We can't scrub it, we can't mop it. Essentially, it'd be like mopping your garage floor every day. That's why we're asking for finished epoxy flooring that will last quite a while in those areas, as well as our apparatus space. Our vehicles in and out every day with road salt, that concrete floor will begin to deteriorate this winter. If you look in your garage, my garage, just from salt, from our vehicles, concrete starts to break apart, and within a few years, we're going to have to be making repairs to that concrete. So this is not only aesthetic, but it's the longevity of that flooring and the building. And then in the living... but it's the longevity of that flooring and the building. And then in the living spaces, um, the dispatch area is our primary gathering, uh, point for all of the staff. Every morning, um, it's a high-traffic area. Um, when we have visitors, they come through that area, and again, just the unsightly unfinished concrete where there's tire marks left from construction vehicles that were in there, high lift jacks, things like that. Um, that's all present. If somebody spills coffee, it's going to stain. We're going to have a permanent stain, and that floor is going to look awful inside of this big, beautiful building that the city taxpayers built for police and fire. Um, so when talking with K A, we all felt that this was a very necessary, um, function and form, not just, you know, appearances and looking to spend money that's left over. And we understand money that's left over, you can refinance for less, but, um, this is really a need and less of a want. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And the reason I support this is it was our, it was in the original budget, just an add-back because we had to cut the budget, was just determined, is there any money left over? So I still, I'm still supportive of it. Further discussion? Councilor Paulson? And then over to Councilor Bachsneider. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was in favor of this last week, um, but I do have questions now. If you're saying there's no trim, trim shouldn't have anything to do with epoxy floors on the bathroom. There should always be trim there. So do we need to talk to Cross Anderson about the finish on that? The epoxy is just goes, it's an overlayment. There should already be trim ready and, um, what's, what's his name? Sean Lewis said that that concrete was all sealed. There shouldn't be any writing within that con, concrete at all.
Yeah, no, I welcome you. I'll, I'll be there Wednesday and Thursday. I can show you the floors where you can see they're writing down measurements on the floors and, um, I don't know if the trim got removed when the flooring did, but it's cinder block to concrete.
Addressed immediately with the trim.
Uh, if I, if I just may clarify, in Sean Lewis's report at the last committee home meeting, he did indicate many of the floors were polished and ready to go, and some were not.
He said they were sealed.
Not all of them.
So they're still, they're not even sealed yet?
There's a, well, Chief, am I correct or not?
The, regarding the bathrooms, uh, I'm not a concrete expert. They're certainly not polished. Um, I don't know if there's a sealant on there that I can't tell, but they, they haven't been cleaned.
Trim isn't there. There's no trim.
There's no trim. It's in the showers, in the bathrooms. It's cinder block to slab.
That needs to be addressed.
Corner is a cult, but yeah. And, you know, our, our fear with that is mold, mildew.
Absolutely.
In the showers, you know, shower areas.
And I think right now they're going through the punch list. That's one of the punch list items they're talking about.
So maybe make that on there? As, is it on the punch list?
It will be.
Okay, so.
We make the punch list. We tell them what needs to be.
Add that to the punch list, I would say, because that.
Add it to the punch list.
Trim needs to be there. Epoxy's an overlayment, but trim should already be in place, so.
Mhm, mhm.
Um, and then, I guess, the reason I'm in favor of this is because I feel like it's important to have those surfaces with that pebble, I call it pebble tech, that's a term, like a pool, pool deck.
Yeah, traction.
Yeah, a little traction on there, and I think that's important. And, um, I understand not expending the funds brings the, you know, the debt down, but I do feel like this is a safety issue and a, an aesthetic issue, so that's why I'm going to continue to support it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Paulson. A Councilor Bachsneider?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. My first question being, this was taken off the list at a certain point. If it's, it seems like it's important, so why would it have ever been considered to be taken off the list?
Uh, because of the value engineering. Uh, we were over budget due to the roughly thirty percent increase in building construction when COVID hit, so we had to go through and get under budget so that we get the building built. Um, we had a fence that went around the perimeter of the back that was taken out of the, the budget. Um, certain areas of flooring were obviously removed. Uh, three ancillary bays, two fire bays were removed. Uh, we lost two or three dorm rooms that were taken out in order to get underneath that, um, initial budget that the council had set, because we were told that we're not going above it, so we had to get below it. So, part of the value engineering is you cut, cut, cut. Well, as you start building, some things, oop, excuse me, I talk with my hands, unfortunately. Um, some things come under cost, and now we end up with a surplus. So at the end, you have to go back in and say, okay, well, this was cut. Yeah, we don't really need this. The epoxy floors would be something that would be a safety issue and also a wear and tear and add durability and longevity to the flooring. So, hope that explains it?
Yeah, that does. And then my second question is, is epoxy the only thing that was explored? Is there not a cheaper solution that would give similar results? Maybe not the full twenty years, but maybe ten years' worth of results?
Uh, in the dispatch room, we did look at, I believe it was an L, L V T?
L V T, yep, luxury vinyl tile.
And that, actually, the epoxy did come in, I believe, underneath.
Underneath that.
Less expensive than that. And then, in the other rooms with the showers, um, a regular tile like we have in other bathrooms, but that would be really pricey, and epoxy was well underneath the cost of putting actual tile and grout in.
I'm even thinking, and I'm, I'm not an expert in this area, but some kind of seal, right? That seems like what you need. And is it the epoxy that it has to be?
No. Uh, epoxy is what K A came through in the whole process of looking at different types of flooring, and essentially, from the construction experts, they said this will be your best bang for your buck. Um, we, the city, the police department said, okay, let's move ahead with the epoxy then. Um, and especially like the apparatus floors, there's really no other alternative for it. Um, and Councilor Paulson is correct. Right now, in our current fire station, we have just smooth concrete floors. Water gets on there. We have had numerous slips and falls, um, due to the, the wet concrete, so it will help reduce the risk of, you know, employee injury in the future as well.
Thank you.
Overall, yeah. Epoxy was the least expensive option for the areas that were outlined.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And so, just, just so I can make sure I'm understanding correctly, this would be coming from the project contingency fund, which the current balance of that is two hundred seventy-four thousand. So after this, if approved, what would the balance of that fund be? And then what are other anticipated expenses that we have coming up, I know, that aren't technology-related that wouldn't come out of that technology, F F and E?
Uh, I think at the last committee home meeting, and, uh, that, that was partially answered by Sean Lewis, uh, that there was, he, there was a number that came out, so maybe, uh, do we have that number, uh, uh, handy by chance? It'd be, I know there's a sign of, there's some money left in the budget, and there was some, there was a question that was asked by, I don't know, one of the councilors here asked, Councilor Beyondich asked, well, what other projects, um, costs are? What other, what other things do you anticipate and expect? And the answer was none.
We do have one. It's not on a scale of this. So, where the gas meter is, um, in the rear by the back employee parking lot, we have to build a protective cover over the gas meter because there's a scupper, uh, a drain for the roof. And per state fire code, we can't have ice forming over a gas meter. It falls and breaks, now you've got a gas leak. But that's not going to be a monumental cost by any means. They're looking at building a reinforced box to protect that meter.
Trying to get Cross Anderson to pay for it from their contingency, because they have their own contingency also, and we have a contingency. We both have one, and we're trying to get Cross Anderson to pay for that.
I believe when Sean said that there's no other major from our contingency, that's what he was referring to, but all cards on the table. There is that. I'm not going to sit here and say there's not, but, um, I, I don't know of any other major. It's all punch list items and.
Thank you.
I, I do, I do want to support this. My concern is really just coming from what else is there, right? We're not fully in that building yet, and that's really what's giving me my angst, but, um, I do, I do want to support it, so I'm going to debate in my head for a minute, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before we go to Councilor Motley, real quick, a question, Britt. Uh, have we applied for a sales tax rebate on, on materials?
We're right in the middle of doing that.
Pardon? In the process of doing that. And do we have an idea what that rebate may be approximately?
Boy, I think we were estimating it was going to be two hundred and fifty thousand, and I think it's actually going to be closer to five hundred, so it's, it's pretty far.
Sales tax rebate, okay, thank you very much. That's all I need to know. I don't need any other explanation. I know that we're applying for this. I know there's money available coming forward. I know the issues that we have with the council. We'll address those things as that money comes in, but this is a value-added back item. Councilor Motley?
Well, now that you said that, Mr. Mayor, um, so where would that money go if we did receive those credits, Britt?
That's, we need to talk about that more. Sean's supposed to have that to me very soon. He's on vacation this week. He's supposed to have the numbers for me very soon. I know that he's working with the contractors to get those because they've been calling me too, to verify some information. So hopefully next week we'll have that, and we can talk further about what we are going to do with that money. If we're going to use it to reduce the debt, um, or what are we going to do with that?
Okay. That's what I was wondering. Awesome, thanks. And then, I hear safety, because I think our workman's comp insurance is egregious, and then you're telling me if we get epoxy flooring, it's going to be safer for you guys inside there? I've, I've just, I've been on epoxy floors that are rather slippery when wet, so I'm hoping that the epoxy in this building isn't going to be slippery?
Uh, from everything we're told, it shouldn't be. It's got a special grit and a pebble that you put into it, so you do have added traction, almost, from what I was told, almost to the point where you can't really squeegee it because there's that much traction, you have to, the sweeper or like a.
Yeah, they did warn us. We have to get a machine, which we have here already, that they could, to use because you can't squeegee these ones. You have to scrub it.
Yep. So it'll be a lot safer than just smooth concrete, which is currently what's in the apparatus bays and the, the traffic areas.
And what's the warranty on the epoxy?
Uh, that was asked, and Sean didn't know off the top of his head, and I, I, I can find out for you, but I don't have an answer for you right now.
Um, I guess it won't be necessary if it passes because it won't matter anyway, but, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Motley. One more question before we ask for any additional comments before we vote. There's a motion on foreign support for that. Britt, how about the tax synergy credits from the, uh, from the, uh, for the solar panels?
We will get those too, and that, that's not quite, the solar panels aren't up yet, of course.
So we're looking.
We are working on that.
We're looking for the rebate money for that as well.
Yep, and thankfully the rebates when you're, for the purchase of the panels. So Archkey is the one, I, I spoke to Mike Cipione last week about this, um, that we're working on getting that rebate back in.
Thank you very much. So, again, that bodes well for additional discussion where that money is going to go as well.
Petroleum grants should open very soon here in November, so we'll try to get money back for that soil remediation we did too.
And you'll keep us all apprised of, uh, when, when, when that, when, when those more, uh, solid numbers come in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it has been moved and supported to approve the epoxy flooring for the Fire EMS Public Safety Center building and with police, and, uh, the money will come out of the contingency for the project contingency fund. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We then had discussion regarding the sewer fund and the purchase of the sewer lateral camera. After much discussion, it was moved and supported to purchase the lateral camera from E J. Sorry, I lost the name. Purchase the lateral camera from the, and to include the sewer fund balance sheet for the next council meeting sheet is in your packet?
Okay.
I would move the approval of the purchase, or approval of the camera purchase.
Councilor Prom, uh, Councilor Friedle moves to approve the purchase of the camera, uh, from the sewer fund balance. Is there support? Is there support? I'm going to support for further discussion. We need to discuss this. Moved and supported. Further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had, I guess, hoped that our city administrator would maybe give the council an update on our meeting that I had with Megan and Britt and our auditor, Tom Kelly, this morning. So, you could do that before we.
Your desk, um, you'll see a copy of, we had discussion this morning about the sewer fund, and we also had discussion regarding what's left in the capital equipment bond from two thousand twenty-three and also the contingency fund, whether the sewer fund was the right thing to pull the money from at this moment. During discussion with, with Tom Kelly, we discussed that it might not be the best to take it out of the sewer fund at this time, but it might be better to use the capital equipment bond money, um, just to clean that fund out and get that one, that bond done, and then work towards, um, fund for the rest of it. There will be a little bit of a gap still. I think it's like four thousand four hundred dollars or something that would have to come out of the sewer fund or something else. I don't know, Megan, if you want to jump in, if there's anything you want to.
Yeah, thank you, Britt. Uh, Megan, anything else to offer? Add?
Remembering, um, just that we had discussed the sewer fund and the interaction of the bonds and the projects and, and how confusing that can be. Um, and it, I guess, it came down to, I think we feel that the spending the money out of the capital equipment bond would be the more appropriate use of this, um, not because we need to, to close out those funds and, and spend those dollars, um, but also to, I guess, give, give some breath to the sewer fund and projects and see where we fall for that for the end of the year. Um, there would be, I, I think it looks like a gap, and I did the math, and I don't have the number now in front of me, of about five thousand dollars difference that I think would be appropriate to come out of the sewer fund. I, I think it's, it's kind of, I guess I don't know what other fund we would take that out of, um, because I, we have money in the capital equipment and the, um, contingency fund.
That's the two thousand twenty-three capital equipment bond?
Yeah.
Okay, so your recommendation, uh, Megan is our finance director, and your recommendation, Britt, is our, um, city administrator, and in your discussions with Tom Kelly and with Councilor Paulson, your, your recommendation is to, uh, pay for this with, uh, the majority of coming out of the two thousand twenty-three equipment bond and the remaining gap coming from the sewer fund. Is that correct?
Uh, the gap, the mo, the majority of the gap being coming from the contingency fund, and then the remaining gap coming from the sewer fund.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilor Paulson?
Could we repeat where the gap is coming from again? In the contingency fund, is that the second page?
The capital, the capital bond, two thousand twenty-three A, has three hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. The only items that we did not purchase using that capital bond were the pickup trucks that were for park and recreation. We chose not to do that this, with this bond, and we just did not purchase the hot food serving counter because the new tenant there chose they didn't, they don't need, that's not what they needed there. They don't want that equipment, so they chose not to do that. And then contingency fund right now has eighty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars in it. That's the general fund contingency fund. That would bring us to a total of four hundred twenty-nine thousand, sixty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
Eighty-nine, and the expense on the sewer camera is four thirty-seven. So that difference is. Minus, what did you say? Four?
Uh, four hundred twenty-nine thousand, sixty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
So approximately eighty-eight hundred dollars, and that would be coming out of, so we have three hundred and forty-five remaining funds in the contingency, or in the capital bond, uh, from two thousand twenty-three A. We leave a money in the contingency fund of eighty-three thousand, so.
Leave eight thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and eighty-one cents. Is that louder, Megan? Oh, sorry. Eight thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and eighty-one cents is the difference?
Okay, so the balance of that, where is that going to come? If, because we'll be using the full amount, uh, balance from the capital equipment bond, two thousand thirty-three A, and the full balance of the remaining of our contingency. And then there's still eight thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars left. So where will that come from?
That would come from the sewer fund.
Sewer fund.
We're at a negative cash balance on the sewer fund. So can this come out of, uh, a different department? Can it come out of? I heard we had a, in Public Works?
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could, we could pay it out of Public Works.
Technically, it would be part of the streets.
It would be, yeah, I mean, it would be part of the streets project. I mean, really, that's, or not the proj, I shouldn't say project, not project, but it would be part of the streets work that we do. I mean, I think that's, that's fine.
Clear as to where we are delegating the funds from, and then, just to clarify, we don't, we are at a negative cash balance in the sewer fund itself, even though we've done the transfers, and that was part of the meeting this morning. We went over the, that and tried to understand, and a lot of that has to do with the, the bond proceeds and where they're going into which. which project and how they're being coded. And so hopefully going forward, we're going to have a, hopefully starting on a better process.
Yes.
But at least now we can pay for the camera cash if we, if we, if the council approves doing it this way. So that's all I had to add. Thank you.
One of the discussion things we had today too is the reason that would be good to spend down the 2023 bond is there, and I don't have the bond particulars in front of me, there's this thing called, I always say the word wrong, I think it's called arbitrage, where we have to show what we used our tax exempt dollars on and we have to prove that we spent the money on what the tax exempt dollars were and that we didn't gain interest on the bond funds that should not be making money. If, my concern is if it's three years, we're going to be getting to that point really soon here and making interest on this $345,000. So I would really rather spend $345,000 now on the sewer camera and get that fund cleared out so that we don't find ourselves in a point where we have to pay the IRS taxes for the non-taxable bond that we did for that. If that makes sense. I know it's, it's a large confusing thing and I, I didn't know a lot about it until Sherry retired and I had to do all these reports, um, for other bonds. But, um, the, the point of the matter is if you hold, if you take money and you don't spend the money, you're supposed to give the money back is basically what it is, or else the IRS will make you pay taxes on it.
Uh, Councilor Bock Snyder, first shed her light on, and then over to Councilor Motley. Councilor Bock Snyder?
Thank you. I'm comfortable with using the capital equipment bond at $343, or $345,000. One question that I do have though, and it bleeds into the next agenda item, um, the plow blades for the Public Works Department. Did we discuss taking that out of the contingency fund or would that be coming from Jim's budget? Because if it's the contingency fund, that's not listed on the sheet. So how are we going to pay for those?
Because they won't be delivered for 18 months, it's something we should budget for in the 26 budget, not in the contingency.
So what other contingents? It's, I mean, it's November, we have two months, it's winter time. What other things typically come this time of year for the contingency fund?
Not a lot. It's, um, usually this time of year we're working on snow and that's the ice and snow budgets, so it's usually not a lot of, um, knock on wood. We don't have a crater or some, or a comet come flying through the.
And I, I think that's like, I mean, same as the, the cam, or as the epoxy flooring, right? It's like, we don't know what else is going to come up within the contingency. So I feel uncomfortable doing it. And is there a better option? And was, and also is this what our auditor said is the best approach to do the three funds as well?
It is what we talked about with him was to, how we would do this is using these three different funds to, to get that purchase. He completely agreed that paying cash makes way more sense than us trying to lease it or bond for it or any of those things. That was his recommendation was to pay cash if any way we can.
Okay, thank you. And then the final thing I'll add, and I did mention this at the very end of the last city council meeting as well, but I would really like our purchasing policy to be reviewed in the future and potentially at the next committee of the whole meeting. I think making sure we don't get into this situation again is, uh, really important. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Bock Snyder. Uh, Councilor Motley?
Um, I guess just a couple of things listening to you and, um, I really find it concerning to drain our contingency fund with like less than two months left in the year. Also, I thought we had like 1.2 million dollars in the sewer fund. So I'm wondering what happened there that we're having to go into our contingency fund and equipment bond to pull money to pay for a camera that I was told we had 1.2 million dollars in the sewer fund. And then we have on later down the committee reports, the, another garbage truck because we didn't outsource the garbage. And was that coming from the 1.2 million dollar sewer fund that we were told we had?
That comes out of solid waste.
Solid waste, okay. I just, I just, it seems like something just did a complete change here on money. So, um, we're going to possibly approve this and drain the contingency fund right now for the rest of the year to pay for the camera that I do think we need, obviously. But, so what happens tomorrow or next week when something else comes up?
Uh, so, uh, let's, let's clarify just one moment where we're going with this motion and then maybe answer that question for you, Councilor Motley. So the motion by Council Freely and the support from myself is to buy the camera and with the recommendation from staff that, uh, $345,000 that comes out of the, uh, equipment bond, right? 2023 equipment bond and the remaining gap comes out of the, uh, sewer fund. Is that correct? No, what is, what then, what would it be? We just discussed that earlier. Now we're changing that. So what is going to be the motion here so we can move this forward?
Contingency. Sewer bond only, the capital, the capital bond only has 345,000.
Yeah, and 345,000 to come out of that?
Talking about taking the rest of it out of contingency.
Okay, which contingency?
City contingency.
Okay, very good.
General fund, yep.
All right, thank you.
And then there's an $8,000 gap roughly that we take out of this, out of the streets budget.
Okay, so the motion on the floor would be to spend $345,000, uh, uh, out of the capital, 2023 capital, uh, uh, equipment bond with the, uh, uh, and the rest out of the, uh, city contingency fund, uh, with the gap, uh, the rest of the gap coming out of the street fund. Is that correct?
I've heard, yes.
Okay, yeah, so I, I understand that now. Councilor Motley?
I appreciate the clarification. I still have major concern. Pam, can you read your?
Pam?
So right now the motion on the floor is to pay for the purchase of the lateral camera from the sewer fund and include, well, we have the worksheets, but, um, that's where the payment is coming from right now unless we amend that motion.
Well, that was the current recommendation and now that recommendation has since changed. So, so we'll have to, uh, would you be willing to rescind your motion? I'll rescind my second, we'll start all over again so we get this moving forward.
Why not amend it accordingly with what we just discussed?
You can do that, you, you can do that too.
That's what I have to do.
I'm just looking for.
Amending it accordingly with what we've discussed with the different pockets of cash that we have to be able to accomplish the task of paying for this.
And then I'll, I'll amend my second as well. So the motion is, uh, correct please, is correct motion would be to, uh, buy the camera, take $345,000 from the equipment bond, 2020 equipment bond, uh, the rest of the contingency, uh, fund and city contingency fund and, uh, Public Works Streets Fund. Is that correct? Is that correct?
No, Public Works Streets Fund. Yep.
Yeah, uh, do you have that, Pam? Would you please read back to motion and make sure this is accurate moving forward? Motion and the second.
Moved by Council Freely, supported by Mayor Cuffey to approve, to pay for the purchase of the lateral camera from the 2023 equipment fund in the amount of $345,318.19. The contingent, city contingency fund of $83,747. Public Works Street Fund in the amount of $8,812. And that's it.
Is that the correct motion that we are talking about here? Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Motley?
Just didn't see this coming. And second of all, what happens when we need something in the next, before end of year 2025 when we just drain the contingency fund? What happens? Where's it coming from, Britt?
Depends on what it is. If something, if it's something with solid waste, we'll take it out of there. If it's something that's, um, can wait till January, we'll wait till January.
So tonight's motion will drain the contingency fund and the funds are, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Motley. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Councilor Biondich?
I'll smile big for you.
We're good.
Yes. Is this the recommendation of the administrator and the finance? That is your recommendation we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Biondich. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Here we got that straightened out. That's good. Okay.
Item 9.1B was the motion to table the approval of the plow blades for Public Works Department in the amount of $44,198 for further discussion at the committee, at the council meeting on November 10th. As we discussed at the committee of the whole meeting, if we were to purchase them today or authorize the purchase today, they would not be here for 12 to 18 months. So it was the recommendation at the committee of the whole meeting that why don't we just budget for it in the 26 budget then rather than take it out of the contingency? And we chose to table it to this meeting.
Uh, Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we go ahead and, and, um, adopt the resolution to purchase, I do feel we need to go over our purchase policy as Councilor Bock Snyder is stating and that our policy then should go from, we would, uh, approve maybe the finance, you know, like get the finance portion under control and then go and approve the purchase. So I guess on any of these going forward, on these purchases, what is it? B, C? And C? I will probably vote no until we get our new purchasing policy in place and then decide how we're going to, how that's going to work. I am in support of what we need to purchase. I just want to have our process correct. And, um, if we need to change our policy first, that's the way I think we should do it.
Okay, yeah, thank you, uh, Councilor Paulson. Uh, Councilor Biondich?
And I would agree. I, I think we've kind of wrangled ourself into a few situations and I would really like to see where the money is coming from and we have it in place before we approve a purchase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. When we discussed it at the last committee, the whole meeting, Britt, uh, and Megan, uh, we anticipated that, uh, that this, uh, we're looking at approving the purchase, but, uh, the blades, snow blades wouldn't be here till next year, until the next snow season. So if it takes 12 to 18 months, which to get these blades, and we really should be ordering them as soon as we can by delaying this to the next committee, the whole meeting for additional discussion about the purchasing policy, how we move forward, I think it would be, it would be who was to maybe, uh, if we don't, uh, if this is, resolution does not vote, is not, there's not a motion made to, to move forward with this that we, we make sure that we determine and let our public works director know our decision, uh, the next committee, the whole meeting for final approval at the following council meeting, whether we're going to purchase, uh, snow blades or not. So thank you for that. Okay, uh, any action to be taken by the council regarding the item 9.1B, the adoption of the resolution for the purchase of the plow blades for the Public Works Department, the amount of $44,198 with, uh, order, uh, not to be take delivery for 12 to 18 months. Council Freely?
Has Mr. Rossett informed us of any deadline for the purchase of this to be able to hold on that price before it goes up to $64,000 the following year? I don't know. That's my concern. I think that's why he brought it forward is because he was given a price that he thought was reasonable, affordable, and we can budget for it accordingly in the 26 budget because we have time to do so. But we may not have time to be able to lock in the price if we go forward with this process.
And I think, uh, our.
And that's not to say that the process isn't necessary. I agree that we have to have that process in place, but we can work on it at the same time simultaneously as locking in prices for the things that we know we need to purchase.
Okay, thank you. And I, I sense that, uh, this is something that is not going to be acted upon today or if it was, uh, it may not pass and it takes a 5-2-2 vote in order to pass to spend the money. So I, I think it would, it would be, uh, I would recommend that maybe we table this, move it to the next committee, the whole meeting, have our, our public works director here explain the process we can afford, what the cost is, is, is there a lock-in price for that? And when does he have to order it in order to, to secure this price? And then make a decision about amending our purchase policy and discuss it from that perspective. My suggestion, Councilor Paulson?
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Motley?
That was me first, sorry.
Councilor Motley?
I thought we discussed at the call last week, um, awesome, well, discussion was, was there any money Megan or Britt, uh, in his budget from 2025 that we could, since he's short so many employees, that we could put that money aside from the 2025 budget and earmark it for, uh, him for 2026? But obviously we couldn't spend it until 2026. Was there money left over for that? Cause we talked about it last week.
So, you know, it's, we certainly can and I, I almost would recommend we create an equipment reserve fund for 2026, um, just so that if we do earmark money for equipment for 2026, I think that would be a good option for it. We're under budget at 75% of the year in Public Works, but I can't predict by the end of year that there will be a certain amount of money left in it. I anticipate there will, but you know, that could depend on weather or blizzards or, I can't predict the amount of money that would be potentially left in that budget.
And winter is coming, so the expenditures will increase significantly in the next two months.
Yep, but we are down quite a few staff members in Public Works. So there should be money there, but maybe not. However, is it possible that we can put this money aside for 2026 earmarked for his cameras? And if he ends up going over the 70 or spending his money for 2025, can you pull it back into 2025? This is.
Yeah, no, I, not really. You know, if we, if we equip, do an equipment reserve for 2026, if that's part of the budget, we can't really pull that back for 2025, I guess.
You can't hold the funds for Public Works and take it out of their budget now and earmark it for this future purchase, but be able to pull it back in case he needs it before the end of the year?
Um, well, I mean, I guess it kind of is a function of the budget that you guys approve. So if you, when you approve the 2026 budget, that would be part of it. So.
Well, this wouldn't be the 2026 budget. This is right now, can we take the funds from him and put it on hold for the future 2026 purchase so we don't have to budget it for his 2026 budget?
We can, but then if, if he spends it basically over, over that, he will be over budget this year. We wouldn't be able to then reduce what we put on reserve necessarily once we approve that 2026 budget. Does that make sense? Maybe, maybe we're saying the same thing but differently. I don't know.
Well, it would be from this year's budget. I guess I might not, I'm an X-ray tech, but, um, take the money from 2025 out of his budget right now of the $44,198. Take it away. Earmark it for him. Don't put it in the 2026 budget if you don't have to, or do you have to put that in if we're moving it from 25 to 26? I don't know how that works with finance. Can we just take it without adding to his 2026 budget and earmark it for the plow blades that he can purchase in 2026? And if he spends his money before 2025 is over, can he take the money back if he's short funds? By the end of the year? Does that make sense or am I all confusing?
I, I see what you're seeing and I guess, long story short, I'm not entirely sure. I'd have to probably do a little bit of research on that just to make, make sure that it would work that way. I, I guess I don't want to say, yes, we can do that without knowing.
Okay, because I would make a motion, I mean, I would support.
I mean, I can bring it to the committee of the whole, when I find out.
Okay.
Committee, whole meeting if that works.
I won't be there, but, um, okay, but I'll, I'll be watching. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so before we go to Council, uh, Bock Snyder and Councilor Paulson, uh, with all due respect, these are, they need them, but we're not going to get them for 12 to 18 months. Okay? So if we order them now, it's 12 to 18 months. If we wait till next month, it's 12 to 18 months. If we wait till after January for the new budget, it's 12 to 18 months before you get the snow, the blades. So you got to account for the money somewhere. So I think it's, would be who was to gather that information from, uh, Jim Rossett. If you want to hold what the cost associated with that is 44,000, if you were worried want to hold what the cost associated with that is $44,000, if you're worried about whether or not that's gonna go up to $64,000 or what, well, we can vet that out at the committee of the whole meeting. I think that, that's where this discussion is usually supposed to get done, is that the committee of the whole meeting, but there's been some changes in the discussion, some with staff and with some of the councils about a variety of these things, which is good. But we're trying to pigeonhole something, try to push something into a certain slot in order to, to move it forward. So I think it needs to be vetted out more so at the committee of the whole meeting as we discuss where we're gonna be at. If it takes 12 to 18 months for us to get these snow blades, we put it in the 2026 budget, put it in there as moving forward, he makes an adjustment to his equipment, whatever the case may be. That's my opinion. I think that's the best way to do it, make it clean and then make the decision moving forward instead of continuing to discuss and trying to find a resolution here tonight. Councilor Paulson and then over to Councilor, whoever else had their line on Councilor Bachs- Councilor Paulson.
Me, everybody. Okay, sorry. So in the packet on page 75, it says expiry date, expiration date basically is 11/9. So that's yesterday. The quote expiration date, yesterday. It's on page 75. That's under for EJ Equipment. That's the plow blades. Is that correct? Okay, so I don't know that we necessarily have to have our Public Works Director. I feel like we all know that he needs it. It's just a matter of how we're gonna get there. So that, I don't know that he needs to sit through four hours. And we just need to figure out how we're gonna pay for the garbage truck and that, that, that conversation is awaiting Baker Tilly telling us and advising us what to do with that. So I don't, I don't want to say yes to purchasing until we have those two conversations. I know that this is what's requested and what our Public Works Director is recommending that is needed. So I don't necessarily need to hear him come here and, and sit for four hours to tell me that same thing. What I need to understand is how, where's the money gonna come from and to make sure that we can ensure that we do have money. Otherwise, it'll be like the same thing. We'll be taking possession of the piece like the camera and we have not paid for it or don't know how we're going to pay for it. So I feel like that process needs to, we've got the cart before the horse. We need to straighten that out. And once we get that straightened out, we can make a financial pathway for both of these purchases, but until then, I would not vote either one of these forward. Thank you.
One more time, I'm gonna make a pitch. Move it to the committee of the whole meeting or move it to the budget meeting. Put it in his 2026 budget, order them then, wait 12 to 18 months and they come in. That's simply the simple thing to do, in my opinion, instead of trying to figure out what we're holding the money here, going here. I get the, you know, what everybody's trying to do here. We all want these blades purchased, but it's $44,000 some odd dollars. Just move it to the budget meeting, add it to his budget and then he makes the order. Probably may not even come in in 2026, might not come until 2027. So is there any action to be taken at this time for the purchase of the 9.1B, the resolution regarding the plow blades? Is there any action to be taken here? Any motions? Any motions? Any motions? Councilor Paulson.
Thank you. Is that, do we need to make a phone call to EJ Equipment and ask the specifics on delivery date?
Certainly can.
Because that might change, so-
Ask him to hold the price too.
I'm happy to reach out if I need to, to get a confirmation because that's not within their court. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we could have staff reach out to him. You don't need to do that, Councilor Paulson, but you're welcome to do so. Okay? No other action to be taken under 9.1B, no further discussion under 9.1B. Let's move to item 9.1C. Britt?
Item 9.1C was to approve to table the resolution to the purchase of the garbage truck in the amount of $365,668.97 to the committee of the whole. That motion did fail, so I'd like to continue to have that discussion.
Like I said, it was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting from 11/4/25. There was no motion, there's no resolution in place. This is just moved from 11/4 to the council meeting for additional discussion information. Does any council have any discussion? Any motions or actions to be taken at this time with respect to the purchase of the Hile garbage truck in the amount of, was it $365,000? Thank you. Is there any further action or questions or comments? Councilor Freedley.
So once we purchase a garbage truck and it goes about its business picking up garbage and we're charging the residents accordingly for that service, that eventually is the revenue necessary to pay for that truck, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I, I do see value in waiting until after the Baker Tilly study is done because it's the Baker Tilly is giving us a plan for a 10-year outlook for the, especially the enterprise funds, but also the general fund. So it would behoove us to wait just a little bit, which is, the plan's almost done. This probably, this is a, this is a very large purchase and it's gonna take quite some time to get here.
We've got time.
We've got time.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, this is the recycling truck. That's another large discussion that we really should be having as well.
The cardboard recycling.
Cardboard recycling. Which can be used for garbage. So it's not, so if we decided to not do cardboard anymore, we could turn it into a garbage truck.
We, excuse me.
Yes.
We had talked about the potential for varying fees for those that have a higher volume of uses versus those who don't, and I think that's certainly a discussion that needs to be had in terms of how we would use it most reasonably and legitimately and then be able to pay for it accordingly. Thank you.
In light of the anticipated report for Baker Tilly, maybe we should move this to another meeting after we hear from them. Councilor Bachsneider.
Thank you. I would move to table the discussion until after the presentation from Baker Tilly and after the update of the purchasing policy.
A move by, move by Councilor Bachsneider to table this until, whether you get the report from Baker Tilly, until we review revised the purchasing policy supported by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion?
Motion.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you for that reminder. Move to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next one, item D, please.
Item D was a request to move the discussion for the library maintenance worker to November 18th committee of the whole meeting for a broader discussion on maintenance workers at the various city buildings. Go move.
A move to approve by Councilor Bachsneider and supported by Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
A discussion regarding request to lease a portion of the city-owned parking lot across from City Hall. It was moved and supported to move the discussion regarding the lease with Colton Peterson for the use of the city-owned parking lot across from City Hall to the next committee of the whole meeting on November 18th.
Councilor Bachsneider.
Thank you. Will this be as a closed session item at the committee of the whole meeting?
Sure could be.
Thank you. I would move to approve.
A move by Councilor Bachsneider. Is there support? A support by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to allow staff to continue discussions regarding the allocation of vacated space at City Hall for rental or for lease.
Oh, moved. A move to approve by Councilor Freedley. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Bachsneider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
9.1G was the approval to, from the, approved the request from the Sugar Shack to utilize the 100 block of Third Avenue North for an igloo dining experience this winter on Fridays. Go move.
A move to approve by Councilor Bachsneider, supported by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to appoint Councilor Freedley to the Rams Board for a two-year term. Go moved.
Move to approve by Councilor Biondich. Is there support quickly by Councilor Motley? Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. Thank you. Councilor Freedley was serving again.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Just a point of order. We did go into closed session at 11:04 a.m. to consider an offer for the purchase of real property owned by the city at 915 and 929 Seventeenth Street North as per Minnesota Statute 13D04, Subdivision 3C1N3 for real estate negotiations. There was no action taken and staff is still working on that matter.
Thank you, Britt.
And the meeting was adjourned after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything, any further items to come before the committee of the whole?
Nothing else from the committee of the whole.
Meeting in that regard? Okay, thank you. Move to item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. There's any city council has a commission liaison report they'd like to disseminate this evening. Councilor Paulson.
Thank you. The cable commission meeting was canceled. I was actually gonna be unable to attend, but I just wanted to ask Britt, do they need, and Pam too, do they need the rev, or maybe, you don't know, the review of the MediaCom franchise? So I don't know, we didn't, I don't know if we were not gonna have a quorum and that's why it got canceled, but Steve Rockola was unable to attend the meeting. But I also wanted to see if we could have the fact that the YouTube has been cutting off after two hours. I had emailed Steve to address that and I never heard back from that. So if we could maybe address that issue as we have upcoming budget meetings, that may be streaming longer than that, that would be appreciated. But otherwise, maybe we do need to reach out, back out to the cable commission to see if they need to reconvene since they still would have enough members to have a quorum if they all meet and discuss that franchise. So I don't know when that needs to get in, but that would just be a housekeeping order that maybe you guys could reach out.
I did have a conversation last Tuesday with that regard that two are, they said they were working on the repair and they, they, I, I don't know the name of the employee that was working and they indicate that they, appears they have some idea of what's transpired there and hopefully a corrective action, but we need to know if they've corrected that or not. So thank you, Councilor Paulson. Any other commission liaison reports we had disseminated today? We will move to item number 11, Department Head Reports. Is any department head ever another report they'd like to give? Jen, anything to bring forward? Megan? Anything from the clerk's office? Britt, anything else? Anything from legal? No? Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, we'll move to item number 12, Council Reports. Does any city council want to make a report this evening? Councilor Motley?
Well, I guess it's not a report. It's just maybe under other items of concern. I just wanted to verify with Britt that the streaming and the budget meeting starting at 7:30 next Tuesday, the 18th, will be live. Okay, thank you. That's November 18th, starting at 7:30. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Bachsneider.
Thank you. I know I've mentioned it a few times about the updating of the purchasing policy. Do you want me to make that in the form? Okay, I would move to, she said yes. I would move to direct city staff to review and update our purchasing policy and bring to the council for recommendations.
A move by Councilor Bachsneider. Is there support?
Support.
A support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. I have a couple of items to present. First of all, this comes from Revive Virginia and through Britt. It's called Jingle All the Way, the Seventh Annual Twilight Holiday Parade. Please note that there's an extended pathway right now. It's a holiday parade starts at 5:15 on November, Saturday, November 22nd at 5:15 downtown Virginia. The longer prayer road would be on Cheston Street, on Fifth Avenue between Cheston Street and Fourth Street South. So fireworks at 6:15 p.m. and the Joyner Fund, there is a bonfire as well on the 19th. So-
Wednesday, 19th on Silver Lake.
Sponsored by Little Wrench and Chamber.
Yes.
Apparently somehow or another, they're gonna have business after hours there as well, so-
Yes, they're giving out chili from Boomtown there, so it should be-
It's not just fire, it's food. So may I want to take opportunity to go there and enjoy. Maybe roast some marshmallows and-
Yes.
And some rebonis or F and D beats. Okay, thank you. So remember, it's Saturday, November 22nd, 5:15 downtown Virginia, Seventh Annual Twilight Holiday Parade. Bring your kids, bring your family, all good times. Thank you. I just want to let everybody know, and many of you probably don't know, I think everybody here sitting in this room knows, that tomorrow is Veterans Day. And it's also the 250th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps. So there's always all kinds of special events going on. I'm missing one down in Duluth as we speak right now, but there's one slated for Chisholm. And so I'll be attending some of those veterans ceremonies tomorrow. The Virginia Honor Guard is gonna be presenting the colors in, in some of the, some different venues, up at Edgewood Vista, at the Pines and a few other places. So I will be honoring the veterans there. I would just implore you all that remember our soldiers, whether they're serving here or, or they're serving abroad, whether they're in the National Guard or whether they're active duty or whether they're actually retired or discharged veterans. We have them on our Fire Department EMS, we have them on our Police Department, we have them everywhere. So I just want to read this because I think it's important that we remember what Veterans Day is all about and how important it is for us to support this country and those people, those servicemen, those people from the United States Military that work hard every day to protect our country. So the soldiers we will remember today and those who currently serve or who have been discharged from the military domestically, on foreign lands, all lived and continue to live by the grace of a higher power. It reflects the deep tradition of honor, loyalty, courage, commitment and sacrifice. So as you're going about tomorrow, look next to you. You will likely see a soldier somewhere. If you remember, if you know, thank him, thank her, shake their hand, cheer for them, honor them, respect them, love them, and all above all else, never forget and never forsaken a soldier, a veteran of the United States of America. You know, the veteran silently walks among us in spirit and in life. We may not know their name, we may not know their pain, we may not know their anguish, we may not see their scars, but the veteran is from all walks of life, unassuming and living among us in spirit as patriots and protectors of our nation. Do we remember? Should we remember? Yes, we will remember. We remember our veterans and we shall never forget the sacrifices they made for this country. So God bless all the veterans today, all the veterans that are serving overseas. Protect them, protect them, protect them. They protect us. We have a great nation here and the United States of America is strong because we have a military that's willing to serve and sacrifice for this country. So thank you. Please remember, all veterans, if you find one, buy them a meal and do something. Just recognize their service. So thank you for that. Okay, nothing else to come before the council meeting today. We are gonna stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, 5:30 p.m. right here in the council chambers. So everybody take care, have a great evening, be safe, have a great Veterans Day and we stand adjourned at 6:55 a.m. Thank you all. Good night. Yes, well, thank you.